Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 11th regular meeting of the Mount Laurel Township Zoning Board of Adjustment for the year 2024. The meeting is now called to order. If you have a cellphone, please turn it on silent. If I'm a complete stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the why United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the secretary can read the open public meeting notes.
Notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law by posting a copy of the annual notice of support for the town hall, filing a copy of the annual notice with the clerk for the town of Laurel, and emailing a copy of the annual notice to Boyd County Times, Courier-Post, and Central Records. All of these filings took place on January 18th.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Dana Felder.
Here.
Mr. Francisco.
Here.
Holmes. Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Sharp.
Here.
Mr. DeSai.
I'm here.
Mr. Boncard. Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the procedure of this board, that every applicant is limited to one and a half hours to present their cases, and that does include the public portion. If for any reason the application exceeds one and a half hours, it will be continued to the next available meeting, unless the board has pulled and agrees to continue the public hearing. No application will be initiated after 10:00 PM. If you are going to be speaking during any of the applications, there is a sign-in sheet at the podium. Agendas for tonight's meeting are available at the podium. We do have one announcement that was the second item under the petitions, Guardian Management Application ZB 24-C-14. Guardian Management has been adjourned and will be heard at the zoning board meeting on January 15, 2025. The applicant will not submit any notices. This is the notice for that hearing. All right, we have some minutes from the November 16th, 2024 meeting to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Francisco, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we have a resolution. R 2024 ZB 15 MLS Operating LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Francisco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Francisco?
I approve.
Chairman Gray?
I approve.
Mr. Dana Felder?
I approve.
Sharp?
I approve.
Mr. DeSai?
Approved.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have two professionals to swear in. If you could stand up and raise your right hands. You swear affirm the testimony you provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you. All right, the secretary can read the first petition.
For Christina Jones. Zoning Board Number 24C18 at 275 St. David Court. It's block 1,006.03, block 51. Our free zone. The applicant is seeking a bolt variant conception 13414 to allow it by 10 feet from the corner property line where 20 feet is required.
All right, what's your name?
Christine Jones.
Can you raise your right hand? You swear affirm the testimony you give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, can you tell us about your application?
Yes, so the right side of my house. I'm on a corner lot. I back up to a corner lot. I had a fence installed in 2019 and have a permit for it. And it was 25 feet from the property line, but I'd like to push it out to 10 feet from the property line to allow more usable space in the backyard. And it would match up, it would align with my neighbor in the back.
So on the side that you want to do this, your neighbor's fence is already 10 feet off on
That's right.
their side.
Yes.
Does anybody from the board have any questions regarding the application? Questions from any board members?
Yep.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak regarding this application? Anyone who fills the public portion? Do you have anything else you want to say about the application?
Nothing else I can think of, no.
Any board member like to make a motion regarding the application?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve it noting that the applicant is on a corner lot, which gives her the particularly unusual difficulty having two front yards. So I move that we approve the resolution for the variance.
My second.
Roll call.
Mr. Francisco?
I approve.
Sharp?
I approve.
DeSai?
I approve.
I approve.
Dana Felder?
I approve.
Vice Chair Anderson?
I approve, only because of the neighbor's fence is already there.
Chairman Gray?
I approve.
You are, I will give a memo to construction and zoning. So whenever you're ready to plan for
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the secretary can read the next application before the board, and if the people for the La Quinta application want to get set up.
Zoning Board Number 24C15 at 5,000 Clover Road. Block 1301, block 1.06 in the business zone. The applicant seeking a bolt variant variant relief conception 13414 to allow facade signs to be 250, 821 square feet, and a canopy sign to be 98.13 square feet or 40 square feet, and allow 8 meters square feet, 2.02. Monument sign. Where no much is contested, however, a bolt variant to allow a 3.4 foot sign. The 3.08 was previously referred to as 1024, 7, 8.7, and later amended to approve that sign to be 22.7 square feet, 2.94.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Richard Roy. I am here on behalf of the applicant. This is our request to be allowed to change the existing sign package to be consistent with current franchise requirements by Wyndham. As Suzanne mentioned, we'd previously, back in, I think it was '07, received approval to allow four signs, two monument and two facade. The monument sign on Route 73 is not being changed size-wise, location-wise whatsoever. It's exactly what you see out there now. The monument sign is located on Clover Road, is actually being reduced in size from 19 plus or minus, or plus square feet, to about 18.42 square feet. It's also being lowered so that it will be three feet seven off the ground as opposed to the current seven feet. I did have a chance to speak with your planner briefly, and his review letter notes the height of that sign is 7.58 feet. That's actually the existing sign. It will be lowered to three feet seven. The two facade signs, excuse me, that we propose are the canopy sign, which is what you saw referred to as the 98 square feet, and the 252 square feet. Part of the reason, I know your ordinance says, you know, how we measure the signs, but part of the reason for those sizes is because we're doing a box to measure what the sign's square footage would be. And in reality, the channel lettering on the two signs, it is 39.85 square feet for the lettering itself for the upper canopy, and 15.43 square feet for the lettering on the facade canopy. Again, I understand that's not what your ordinance, how you measure it on your ordinance, but it does appear when you read the application to be somewhat overwhelming that you allow 40 feet and we want 252. The reason, I believe back in '07, that the variances were granted, or part of the reason, was that this property is uniquely located. It's between 73, behind an existing hotel, and Church Road. And so we are somewhat blocked from visibility from 73, just by the hotel in front. And then we have the signage on Clover. That's the sign that we're making smaller. So with that, I can call my client and have him confirm some of my representations and offer testimony as to why we're requesting what we are. Could you give the board your name?
Rishi Sukharamala.
And
All right, can you spell that for the record?
First name's R U S H I, last name S U K H A R A M as in Michael, W A L A.
All right, can you raise your right hand, please? You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Counsel, I think it works best if you're at the one microphone there, and he's at the microphone there, so if we pick up both here.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Rishi, you are one of the owners of this hotel, correct?
Correct.
And you've actually been involved with the hotel since it was built in 2005, believe me?
Yeah, started construction in 2005, opened in '08, and I've been there since day one.
And you heard me indicate to the board that this hotel is, it's located in a location between 73 and Church. You just described how you're blocked in front.
Yeah, so there is, as you said, an existing hotel in front of us. That's the Knights Inn. Then we actually have a hotel behind us as well, the St. Edward Suites, so we're kind of nestled in between the two. So it is kind of a unique situation.
And is that one of the reasons that we're requesting the relief, that we're requesting because of visibility so that people don't pass it if they're on 73 or if they miss something from Church?
Yep. Also, the monument sign that is on Route 73 that we're not changing at all is very low to the ground. So the signage on the building itself is very important to us.
All right, well, so you just answered my next question. You asked me about the change, no change to the monument sign on 73. The monument sign on Clover is actually being lowered and reduced in square footage?
Yes.
All right, in terms of facade signs, there are two. The upper facade sign is the larger of the two that we're requesting relief for?
Yes.
Does that fit with the facade of the hotel aesthetically, size-wise, proportionally?
Yes, I think it does look pretty proportion to the building itself.
And in you, in the terms of the canopy sign, that same thing, we're asking for the 98 square feet, is that in proportion to the canopy?
Yes, I believe so.
And we actually already have an existing upper facade sign and a canopy sign, correct?
Correct.
How does the size compare between the current signage and what you're proposing?
Ashton told me you were gonna ask that. The, as best we can tell, the variances that we received back in '07 would allow a 60 square foot upper canopy sign and a 37.5 square foot, I'm sorry, upper elevation sign and a 37.5 square foot canopy sign. I don't know if anything changed with the way signs were measured, but that's what, what is best we can tell that variance allows.
Okay, because the way I'm looking at it, if you had approval for 60 square feet before, you're looking now for 64 and a quarter? For the, the top one?
No, well, the way your ordinance hasn't measured it, the box and everything, including the sun, because the problem is with the sun, which is the corporate, part of the corporate logo, you have points that stick out, so when you do the box, you have to do the box from the tallest to the lowest, all the way across. So there's, there's significant square footage in the box that's not signage.
Well, look, the logo is part of the sign. You wouldn't
No, I understand.
You, okay.
I'm just saying that, let's say, for example, the sun is eight feet, but the actual channel lettering is four feet. Well, all the way across, we're measuring eight. You don't go down, and it's a rectangle. It's not some differently.
Wait, so the new, the sign you're proposing, what are the dimensions of it?
The upper is 32 six by seven foot nine, and the lower is 20 and a couple inches by four foot 10.
Do you need the mic? It's behind you.
Oh, take it with me. Do you need me to repeat that, or?
No.
Yes, yes.
So the, the upper is 32 six and a half inches by seven feet nine inches, and the bottom, the canopy, is 20 feet three and five eighths by four feet 10 inches.
All right, now. The pizza, the pizza part, what in size, what in height of those letters on the new, on the proposed?
That would be, the highest one, the Q, is 58 three sixteenths of an inch, and then the, the U slightly smaller, and the LA is slightly smaller than that. Like, the LA is 23 and nine sixteenths, and I unfortunately don't have the
And what's the, what are the height of the letters on the old sign, the wing gate part?
I can tell you the square footage. I can't tell you the height of the letters.
The old sign, though, is a box sign, right? So like, would the letters come into play? Because this is like channel lettering now. Does that matter at all?
Yeah. There are drawings up on that board of what the signage is, but in our packets, I have this.
Yeah, we don't have that.
And I have
We don't have
We don't have
I have wing gates in it.
Right, we, I didn't, we don't have that.
No, I'm not
Do you have those copies?
I'm not sure
I'm gonna need it.
What sign you're looking for, because it's not what I have in my application. Because I was looking at wing gate signs. I know it's currently, I didn't thought they were changing wing gate and gonna put wing gate on it. So I just want to make sure what
They were wing gate previously, but unless that was something the sign company submitted.
All right, so what, what is it? These are the prior approvals. Okay.
What should
You have, the packet has all the
I'm having
That particular, I have that particular. Oh, that's, sorry, I thought that was
Oh, no, 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 this is a compendium of different shots of this. You have these, you just have them as pages. I just bought them on the board trees of reference.
No, I don't have that.
Correct, so they took with their prior approvals and changed brand. Now they want to change those. I don't have the I only have, I think, what is the monument?
Yeah, this. Yes.
That's the monument, but not what they want to put on the building. That's why you're asking for the building size, and we don't have that.
That's true.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
You should have the, you know, the smaller version of it. Everybody has three pages of the proposal.
What?
I don't have what they want to put on.
So it's, it's just that one? I don't have mine. I have the pie.
I don't even, I don't even see the sauce.
It was, this is all, this is the only thing I have for that. I, I don't know.
I guess the question is it looks like
Yeah, every, yeah, I, I took a bit of them.
All right.
And, and I don't have them.
We actually had them signed. You asked for them signed and sealed, but we actually had the sign company
Yeah.
And the signed and sealed prints, which were submitted with the application.
All right, so let's mark these, just so we know what is what, and make sure that what copy we're marking is consistent with what Dana has.
And I do need that, because I don't have that. I have, for the facade sign, this is what we have for your facade. This is all that was what you have up there. I don't know.
Well, I think we have, it looks like there are seven documents on the board.
Right.
On the upper, we appear, I think, to have the document on the upper left and the lower left. Upper left is a site plan showing for the purpose of a monument, and Show location, yes. Show location, and the, and the left lower is a site plan. I don't know that we have the other five.
Right. Yes, correct, we do not. I have this for the facade. There was the facade and the monument.
So you have nothing for the awning, then?
These are, this is all, this is the entirety. These, and this, which is the third.
That the facade, monument?
Oh, yes, this one, yeah, these are not the same.
The second facade?
Two page.
Package with, actually, the package contained the five sheets that your planner refers to. That was the one that started with the site plan. Showed the upper elevation sign, okay.
Yeah, the, the
With the can
The large plan was, were given, yes, the large plan goes to the professional.
We sent the smaller version. The 11 by 17.
Nobody has it?
No. I have only what's in the drop box.
Because I don't have that in the drop box either.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know.
Three signs.
That's why it's tough to keep track of what's what and what size difference.
Yeah, because I can barely see that.
Yeah, I can't see that either.
Maybe we can bring that closer?
Yeah. Get this fixed, so Chris?
Is it, is it a lot to make some 11 by 17 copies?
No, if you want to move, if you want to go to the next one, I can get the recording going and go make them.
We, we can't proceed without our secretary. And the one night, we don't have
Chris? Can they present with the big packet here?
Well, we may be able to make copies, so I think we may just take a break, let some copies get made.
Can't they, can't they just present with the big copy here? Put it up on the board and present it to us? We all need to have separate
I'd kind of prefer to have the dimensions and
And I'm assuming they don't have them electronically, put them on the screens. We don't have them electronically, so I guess they don't.
So I, I don't know what happened, but I understand the board has trouble with
Right, yeah, I just want to be able to see what we're, what we're looking at here, and what I was looking at in my packet was not complete with what you have on the board, so I want to make sure we give you the fair shake of the, of the hearing and understand exactly what we're looking at and what we're potentially approving, but I just, we need, we need to make copies, that's all.
I'm assuming you don't have electronic versions of that?
We submitted electronically, I believe.
If they're submitted, then I, then I have them. I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened.
All right, why don't we do that?
Why don't you combine them and pull them, put them on the screen?
With, with the applicant's permission, can we go off the record, work out getting some copies done, and then we'll come back on the record? Is that okay?
Sure.
We're not gonna have any discussion about it, just, we'll take care of getting the documents. That way we can, out of the rush, and stay on the record. So, why, can we just go off the record? Do I do a motion to go off the record?
Make a motion to all in favor?
All right, I'm gonna make a motion. Do we adjourn for a couple minutes to work out this document issue? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second, Mr. Sharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll go off the record, we'll work to get a stream. Let's go back on. All right, we just came back. It's 6:39. We're only off for a couple minutes. We now have copies of the exhibits. Our counsel discussed it with the counsel for the applicant, and they've now marked all the exhibits, so I'll let them put the exhibit markings on the record. Counsel, you just confirmed that we went off the record, just dealt with the documents, didn't deal with any testimony or issues regarding this case?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good.
So, Mr. Chairman, I conferred with Roy, and on the board, there are seven exhibits, which I believe the board members now each have individual copies of each of those seven documents, and we're going to refer to those documents as follows. On the upper left-hand corner of the board, there's Exhibit A1, which is a plan from the prior zoning approval indicating, among other things, the location of the existing monument sign along Route 73. Below that left-hand corner of the board is Exhibit A2, which is the site plan. In the middle on the top is a sheet containing two photographs, photographic array, showing the existing 73 monument sign. And that's referred to as A3. The document immediately below that will be marked as A4, and it is an aerial photo of the property. To the right, upper right-hand corner, their document is A5, which is the proposed front elevation. Immediately below that is a document we refer to as A6, which is the proposed canopy elevation, and on the bottom right-hand corner is a document marked as A7, A7, which is the proposed Clover Road facade, or I'm sorry, the closed Clover Road monument signs. I hope that, I appreciate the opportunity to put that on the record and hope that helps the applicant.
Okay, but I think picking up from where we were, you were, counsel, addressing, or I think we've marked as A5, which is the top right.
Right.
Okay, that is the sign. It is the high one on the building.
That's right.
And I think the question that Ms. Anderson had asked is, what was the square foot that was approved by the board previously for that sign?
Uh, and
Making sure.
Indicated it was 60 square feet.
Now you're seeking 252?
Again, I'm not sure of how the ordinance measured signs changed, because look at it as, or something times as large, would seem like it would have to overwhelm the facade. And it doesn't do that, so I don't know back in '07 how they measured signs, if it changed at all with the box sign or not, but, yes, that's what we're requesting. And, Rishi, that's all part of the national, to be a franchisee, not necessarily that size, but it's all part of keeping with what La Quinta requires.
Correct, the brand standards have changed since then. Most of the brands are going to channel lettering, so this is just like a more modern look.
And, Rishi, you're aware that there's another La Quinta in Mount Laurel, correct?
Correct.
And that's the one on Route 38?
Yes.
Is that actually, no, you're not here, but is that blocked by any things in front or anything from 38?
No, they have like open visibility.
And we did some research concerning that, their signage, correct?
Yes.
And I understand every application stands differently, and that was the planning board, not the zoning board. But I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It is right on Route 38. Unlike us, between hotel and back, hotel and front. That location was approved for two facade signs, the upper being, well, I can't say the upper, because I'd say that just as two signs, but one being 210.2 square feet.
Excuse me, can you please make sure you're speaking into the mic? We'll lose you if you don't.
That other La Quinta location on 38 was approved for two facade signs, one being 210.2 square feet and the other being 16 and a half square feet. And, Rishi, if, if that was something the board would consider, would those sizes be acceptable to you?
Uh, depends.
Okay, it depends on what?
Um, I mean, I don't know, maybe we should get their feedback first before we go down that road.
There, there is a
Because it's not exactly apples to apples, but
Yeah, there, there is a consistency in maintaining what has been going on, zoning plan, signs, and other things, so I understand your counsel representations about something the planning board has done. I mean, I, I don't know that resolution off the top of my head, or particularly regarding it, because I don't know the planning board, honestly. But the you, you would almost be seeking You know, you would almost be seeking twenty percent more for the big sign than what the planning board had done. You said that was a window?
It's the same.
It's the same brand.
Oh, that's, that's the new one, right?
Yes.
It was over by, uh.
Unplex, yeah.
Is that what it's called now? Is the.
Actually doing a copy of the resolution.
The proportionality of the sign for that new La Quinta, is that maintained? Does that make any sense? Like, is that building bigger? Does it, I think that one's like four stories compared to this one's.
That's actually, Rishi, uh, pointed out, I, when I read the resolution, that's actually two different brands, correct?
Correct, it's a dual-brand hotel, so they technically have two signs, I would assume, one for La Quinta and then one for Hawthorne. Uh, but I assume that the, I'm, once again, not an architect or engineer, but I assume that, uh, when that prototype was kind of, um, designed, it was designed with those signs in mind to be perhaps a little bit smaller. Whereas our building is much older, so it was designed with a box sign kind of in mind.
As opposed to the channel lettering.
As opposed to channel lettering, yeah.
All right, continue.
Um, Rishi, you already indicated that this, uh, this was important, uh, for visibility purposes.
Mm-hmm.
That, that is the case.
Yeah, so like if somebody is driving southbound on the seventy-three side, they can't see our building at all. With a sign, without a sign, there's no visibility at all. Uh, so we only have a chance at seeing, um, folks that are coming seventy-three north. That really is the only way we can, uh, show off our building. And, and Clover Road is also an extremely small road, we're literally the only thing located on it, so there really is no chance of just random passerby's, uh, seeing our building.
So when you work with the sign company, do you ask them to design something that's proportional to the building?
Uh, yes.
And we can answer any questions the board has.
Well, the signs that were approved prior to this, the ones you currently have, were considered proportional to the building at the time. And now you want letters that are four times as tall. Um, so I don't see how that's proportional to this particular building. I mean, because it's, I mean, it's, you can stretch it out, it's much more rectangular now. More of it, that's fine, but I don't understand why the letters need to be four times as tall as they currently are. And I'm sorry, I don't think anyone's going to see the sign from Route seventy-three. And if they do, they shouldn't be looking that far away when they're driving every seventy-three. I mean, I think you're really dependent on your sign concept and your line of thought. I mean, that's the sign.
I mean, unfortunately, that sign is also super low, so by the time people see that sign, they're already past it. Um, it's not, I mean, I drive on seventy-three north all the time, and you just glance to your left-hand side, you could easily see the building. It actually has really good visibility, there's no trees, no building blocking it or anything. And Clover Road's kind of angled, so even the hotel in front doesn't really block.
But it's way back.
Understood.
Yeah. And I think any La Quinta that has gone through this process of switching from a box sign to the channel lettering, all of them are going with a bigger sign, I mean, that's just natural. There would be no way to put channel lettering inside that. Yeah.
Understood.
Looking at, um. And is it? That's the other one, right?
Yep.
So. The other one has one big sign on top, but it doesn't have like the awning one, right? At the, the same thing.
I wish I had a picture in front of me, but I don't think they.
I, I think we were just.
Just Googling it, yeah.
But I guess the question I would have is, do you need to have both? Because if you had, you combine the size together for the one, I think the top one's the one you really want, because even the bottom one gets covered by the trees along the road, and you can't.
So that does seem perfluous.
Um, if I understood the brief discussion with my client correctly.
If you need a moment to talk to him, don't rush, you can, you can take a minute and talk, I don't want to.
So if we were to eliminate the canopy sign and request the facade sign, be either what's proposed, or something, uh, slightly smaller, consistent with what was approved for the other La Quinta, would that be something that the board might entertain?
Something I think I could be more comfortable with, I would be.
I'm still, I'm not clear on what they want to change, besides the front thing.
Okay.
Well, the monument signs on seventy-three stays the same, monument sign on Clover gets smaller and lower.
But they, but they copy on all.
Yes, yes, that is correct. Yes. And then.
I think that the, the landscaping almost makes the sightline of the sign on seventy-three difficult to see.
But that's.
So, I mean, that, that's something I noticed just when I was driving by, that the way the, the trees and the landscaping are, they're right up and almost covering the sides of it.
Yeah, and we can look at that and see if there's something to, with the stuff. You know, they, they've grown in seventeen years, so maybe something that we should go back to a lower shrub, that's just, you know, on each size, same size as the sign, same height as the sign. But, so just to summarize of the seventy-three, we didn't propose any changes, we can look at the landscaping. Clover Road gets smaller and lower. Uh, we offered to do away with the canopy sign. Uh, if we can keep the upper elevation sign, either it will be proposed, or as large as the other La Quinta, just to keep us at a, on a competitive even foot.
Well, if I, if I remember correctly, I haven't lived here for a long time. So the Knights Inn actually fronts on seventy-three.
Correct.
And Stabridge actually kind of fronts or does something with Church Road, and you're in the middle.
Correct.
Right, and you think your front signs will be seen by somebody out on seventy-three, is that what you're saying?
They take the upper elevation.
If, if you are going northbound, I think you can see some of it, because the McDonald's is back, you can see part of it. But if you're coming. You're going, you're going southbound.
So, and, so you have signs out by the Church Road in seventy-three as well, right? Yes?
Church Road, no.
Saying you're not changing size.
Church Road does not have one, just Clover and seventy-three.
Yeah, but, yeah, there's a monument sign.
They're making seventy-three the same exact size, but Clover, they're going to reduce size.
Seventy-three doesn't change at all, like it literally is the same exact sign.
The logic sounds like I'd rather bigger signs on the highway. Not worried so much as the signs on the building, I want signs on the building, but I wouldn't need very big, just big enough for somebody driving up. So it just, it's, I don't know, it just seems the logic is backwards. But you, you pick what you want to propose, and we'll vote on that.
So I think, and please, uh, VJ, Rishi, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we proposed seventy-three stays the same, we'll look at the landscaping. Uh, Clover gets smaller and lower, so I'd have to think that, I don't want to presume anything, but I would think that would be a, considered an improvement by the board. We would eliminate our request for the canopy sign, and we would request the larger upper elevation sign, but if the board said.
Top one.
But it'd only be two hundred and twelve, two hundred and ten point two square feet that the other La Quinta got, we could live with that.
Two ten point two. You're going to, you're not change the canopy sign or eliminate the canopy?
Instead of we.
We're going to eliminate. All right, any further testimony?
Uh, Rishi, do you see any detriments to, uh, if the board would approve this? It's going to impact your neighbors at all?
No, I don't think so.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, any other questions from board members?
You know, I spoke too soon.
What?
Just, I apologize, only because Ashton erased his letter, two items. Uh, we did confirm on the site plan that neither of the sign, the monument signs interferes with the site triangle. It's actually, site triangle is shown on the plan. Uh, and he also asked us to confirm the Over Road sign was at least ten feet from the property line. Uh, if I scaled it correctly, it's currently twenty-five, it's being made slightly lower and longer, uh, but it will be, it will remain more than ten feet from the property.
Okay, so you're, you're complying with the commission letter?
Yes, sorry, I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah, so my question was, now that you've amended your application, what variances do you still need? Do you need a size of a sign variance?
Yes.
Do you need a number of sign variants?
Uh, we need, we need the variance for, allow the three signs, uh, as well as the two facade signs, and the size of.
Well, you're losing me now.
I'm sorry, you're right, the one facade sign. Uh, the size of the facade sign. Three signs total.
And they already have.
Technically, we have four.
You have four.
Technically, they have four.
So they're asking, you're asking us, you've already been given approval for four, you're asking us to give you approval to reduce it to three?
Basically trading off one sign for a size.
Larger ones.
I got it.
For, for two of the facades.
Right.
So now they're going to say, instead of two larger ones.
One.
We'll go to one that's larger. And about, and it's going to be consistent with the one planning had approved on thirty-eight.
But still, the number of signs, less.
The number is less.
All right.
You good on that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess.
I don't see any questions.
Oh, I'm missing something. Why do we need a variance for the number of signs? I don't think, I don't think you need a variance for the number of signs, unless I'm missing something.
I defer that to you and your planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I understand that, well, first of all, ground-mounted signs are not permitted. So they wouldn't normally be permitted to have that, as I understand.
Monument signs are permitted.
Right, but they were given a variance in two thousand and seven.
That's what I mean, so, so those two, the two monument signs exist by virtue of the existing variance. One is the dimensions of one sign, one of those signs is not changing. The dimensions of sign on Clover is being changed, it's going to be lower, slightly smaller, but it will otherwise comply. That's correct.
Our letter, okay, let me just back up a minute. No, our letter from Remington and Vernick dated November twenty-ninth states that it has a summary of the variances that are required. So one of them is the number of signs, one of, one is the area of the facade sign, and one of them is to provide a freestanding sign. Those all three require variances according to the sections that are cited in the letter. If there's.
Okay, I'm, I'm reading the letter now.
You do, but for the fact that they were previously approved.
Right, they already have a variance.
They don't need new variance. The only new variance we need is for the size.
Well, they're, they're changing.
The one facade sign. But, yeah, I, I get paid to worry, so.
Yeah, you need new approval.
So, Mr. Jones' letter. We need, we need a variance for the revision to the Clover monument sign. There's a pre-existing variance that allows the sign, dimensions are being changed, so technically that's a variance.
It gets smaller.
Yep, it's getting smaller, and its loc, its location is changing. Theoretically. And then you need a variance for the banner sign, whatever we want to call it, facade sign that goes on the top of the building, because its size is significantly larger than, code would require in larger than the prior variance. If the, if the sign at seventy-three is not changing, its location, its size, or its shape, I don't believe you need a variance.
We're not, we're not going to touch that one.
Correct, we're not touching that.
Okay. And Suzanne? Is there anyone from the public division to speak about this application? Not seeing any. All right, we're going to close the public portion, bring it back to the board. I think for simplicity, I'll make the motion to approve based upon the conditions we place on the record of, increasing the size of the facade sign to, to be consistent with what the record has, I think it was two hundred and ten point two square feet.
Correct.
Elimination, so there's no, um, awning sign, and to approve the sign on Clover, which is going to be reduced in size and adjusted in position pursuant to the plans, um, with the conditions that they abide by, uh, the comments in Ashton's letter. I think that was all of it. So that's my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Francisco. Roll call, please.
Chairman Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Francisco.
I approve.
Mr. Gessai.
I approve.
Mr. Sharp.
I approve.
Mr. Kramer.
I agree.
Mr. Danafelder.
Approve.
Vice Chair Anderson.
I approve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I apologize for any confusion.
No, I'm relieved.
Thank you.
I'll get it worked out. All right, we're going to just take a two-minute break, and then we're going to do RAR Capital. Let's do this. All right, the secretary, can please read the next application?
RAR Capital LLC is zoning for number point four D sixty. It's at five thirty-eight Fellowship Road, block twelve oh four, lot six. The applicant is seeking a one-year temporary use approval to allow fleet parking, where parking is a primary.
Counsel, appearance, please.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Neil O'Brien from the Law Firm of Archer and Griner for the applicant, RAR Capital LLC. Um, as stated by the, the board secretary, and Suzanne, I wonder if you wouldn't mind bringing up the existing condition survey for us? Um, this is a somewhat, a slightly unusual application, uh, but very, very straightforward and simple in nature. Um, it is, uh, five thirty-eight Fellowship Road, block twelve oh four, lot six. It's the former Greyhound bus station site, which closed down about, I think, a year, year and a half or so ago. Um, the applicant's purchased the property, as you'll hear in testimony this evening, and are planning, of course, for long-term redevelopment, smaller of the property for a permitted use pursuant to the zoning ordinance. Um, the site is, uh, of course, fully fitted out with, with, uh, vehicle spaces, vehicle parking spaces, and has, uh, the former Greyhound bus, um, station terminal, where folks used to go in, I guess, and, and, and get the bus, um, when people used to ride buses a little bit more. Um, as you'll hear in testimony, the applicant has come up with a fairly innovative, um, but fairly simple, uh, method of putting the property to use in the near term as they finalize their development plans. Um, they are, uh, proposing to use the property on a temporary basis for a fleet pass, a fleet car or fleet vehicle parking. Again, not a used car parking lot, not a public, uh, car park for fleet parking for, uh, folks that own a lot of vehicles, and the applicant will describe that in a little more detail, um, for you. So your zoning ordinance allows this board to grant a temporary use, uh, permit for a period, um, of, of, uh, a, a year, um, but requires that if a site plan approval is required, the applicant submit a minor site plan. Here, there's no vet development proposed whatsoever, um, everything that's needed for this use, as you'll hear, is in place. Um, however, uh, remote or standalone parking lots are not permitted by ordinance in this zoning district. They are, of course, permitted in concert with a permitted use. And the surrounding uses, of course, all have very large parking fields, but as a standalone parking lot, this use is not permitted, so we are required to ask you to approve a use variance this evening, which is, um, what we're here to do. Yeah? I don't want to say that affirmatively, but I believe that, that it is not, I believe that it is. Um, if I could, I'll, I'll bring forward, uh, one of the members of the applicant, uh, RAR Capital LLC. And what you see on the board here is simply an, an aerial, it's not quite aligned with the survey, which it shows you sort of in, in photographic form, what's, what's on the existing condition survey. And I will send Suzanne a copy, and I'll mark that as A1, aerial photograph of the, of the, of the property.
So we'll do A1 as the aerial, and then A2 will be the drawing we have up?
The drawing was part of your package, so I'm not sure if it needs to be, um, labeled, but we certainly can label it as A2.
If we're referring to it in the hearing, I, I asked that it be identified as it, with an exhibit.
Done, so the, uh, the existing condition survey submitted with the application, uh, will reference as A2. Thank you, counsel. Um, so, Mr. Shaw. Um, the, uh, the chair or the, or the attorney will swear you in, um, and will, will ask you to describe this, this, um, project state. The, the chair or the attorney will swear you in and will, will ask you to describe this, this project state. Your name and affiliation for the...
Shap, RAR Capital, co-founders. Say your name, please. R U S H A, B as in boy H. Last name is Shaw, S H A. Raise your hand. You swear in front of the testimony you're about to give, it'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. Okay, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Ruch, if you could, just very briefly tell the board who, who is RAR Capital LLC?
RAR Capital is just a real estate investment and development company formed by myself and my partner, Josh Matthew, about a few years back. Our focus is really to work with various communities to develop underutilized or just abandoned sites as one of the primary focuses.
And you heard me state that you're seeking approval for a temporary use permit for the use of this property in the manner that I've described?
Yes, correct.
So you've already acquired, when did you acquire the property?
So we closed on the property a couple of months ago. You know, the, the truth is, on a development site, we would typically wait to get approvals and make a subject to deal. This was a bit of a unique situation where we had a difficult seller, a seller that was kind of ignoring the property, it was deteriorating, and we kind of made a decision to calculate a risk to acquire the property as-is, understanding that our intended use was consistent with the zoning, with the goal of, in this case, hopefully finding a temporary use that could take advantage of the current improvements on the site as it is, to help us really just carry the land until we're ready for development.
So long-term, your commitment is to bring a beneficial use to this property, other than this temporary use and, and one that's consistent with the zoning ordinance? Or if not, would obtain appropriate approvals from this board?
Correct, yeah. This was not acquired to be a parking lot, essentially. Our goal here is to redevelop the site, that's really been our focus, that's why we acquired the site.
Great. So in terms of the use itself, you, you heard me give a brief description. You are in negotiations with a known regional auto dealership, right?
Correct. There's actually a couple of discussions ongoing. We are on a confidentiality agreement. But the goal is, we tried to be as thoughtful as we could in terms of understanding what the potential impacts would be for the area and the surrounding site by our use. But it is a, you know, potential dealership or automobile manufacturer that would really just park their vehicles, their inventory here of newly manufactured vehicles until they were ready for delivery to the ultimate buyer or to the dealership.
So how, operationally, how would that work? How would the, the vehicles come to the site? How would they leave the site and where would they go?
Yeah, and, and some of it is really just dependent on who the user might end up being, but it's going to be a combination of individual, individual vehicles either being driven on-site, either coming in in kind of a flatbed or trailers in some instances.
And then they would be stored on, on the property? And when needed by, if it's an auto dealer, they would be taken from the property to the auto dealership for delivery to a buyer or for inspection or, as, as the case may be?
They, they would be stored on-site as vehicles were needed for the end buyer. They'd be either taken directly to the end buyer or to the showroom where they would be basically serviced and ready for delivery to the buyer. You know, the, the goal for us was really to make sure we weren't having too much peak traffic, ton traffic going in and out of the site. We thought this would be a relatively kind of clean and, you know, least disruptive use versus some of the other users that have approached us for the site, which we just kind of didn't want that on the site. And we weren't sure that would be the appropriate use for the site.
Sure. And what's the benefit for the owner of the fleet, of, of the fleet vehicles? What's their benefit in being able to consolidate these vehicles potentially in one spot?
Yeah, I mean, I think some of it's just driven by them being able to be a little bit more environmentally conscious. If you look at how some of these operators or dealers are storing their cars right now, they're kind of storing them all over the place. They're utilizing parking lots at office buildings that are underutilized or just random lots throughout multiple towns, I believe, including some in Mount Laurel. And so this allows them to consolidate into one location and also probably do it in a fashion that's more legally committed.
And just to be very clear for the board, you are not proposing sales or auction of vehicles at this site? You're not proposing vehicle repairs or any kind of fit-out or retrofit, any kind of dismantling of or storage of car parts?
Definitely.
Okay, we're not talking about truck trailer parking? Okay. So what are some of the physical improvements on this site that you think make this site particularly suitable for this use that you've come up with?
Sure, so the site, as, as you all know, was a prior Greyhound facility. And it is secured, it's fully fenced, it's lit, it's paved. We don't really need any physical improvements on it beyond the paved lot. So it's really set up. We're going to have to probably just clean up the site a bit and do some vegetation management, which prior owner did not do, to make it a little bit more presentable, but other than that, it's pretty much ready.
There are fire lanes already marked on the property, correct?
Correct.
And you said that the site is fenced and it's also gated at that access easement onto Fellowship Road, correct?
Correct.
Does your user, do you anticipate any use of the existing building in, in connection with this use?
That has not been part of the discussion, and that building is only about 3,900 square feet. Our intent would not be to allow anyone to be allowed to enter.
Okay. You don't foresee any significant noise from this use?
No, it should be relatively low impact.
No idling engines, no fumes, no, okay. So why do you think this location is, is ideal for this use beyond the improvements that are already on it?
I think it's the access as well, just given access to 73, Route 295, there's a turnpike. If you look at the site relative to kind of what other options potential users add, this is pretty ideally located from the standpoint of, some of these vehicles are coming in from the Port of Philadelphia as well. Easy access over New Jersey where a lot of the customer bases at the ultimate service.
You've got the highway there, you've got 295 there close by, you've got Route 73 close by. So this is a great beneficial immediate use of the site. In your negotiation, we'd love to be able to come to the board and say, okay, this is our user, here's a picture of the vehicles. We can't really do that because you're trying to lease the property and the people you're talking to are saying, well, you got to show us, we can use the property for this purpose, correct?
Correct, yeah. These users, they want to know that they can immediately go into the property, otherwise, you know, they're going to go...
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shaw?
I know you're saying you want this a temporary use, a year, one year sticking in my head, is that what I've seen written or that's what we're allowed to grant?
Yeah. I, I think one year is the limit of what you're allowed to, to grant. I'm not going to stand here and say that we won't come back and say, hey, we're not quite there with development of the property yet, can you give us another year? But at, tonight, we're asking for one year.
So you're coming here asking this so you get some rent while you plan out what you ultimately want to develop there or have somebody develop there?
Correct, yeah, we intend to be...
So you're in confidential negotiations with people that would start their new vehicles there. Do they understand this is like a one-year time limit? Do they understand that like this is a temporary solution to a problem they may be addressing and they're going to need to find somewhere else?
Yeah, they're working on longer-term solutions as well, which have a lot more of a lead time for them to be able to actually occupy. So this kind of bridges the gap. You know, they understand that one year.
Alright, I understand the answer.
My, my concern is that, you know, going south on Fellowship Road would not be a problem because you are getting in to the property. Getting out of the property, and if my recollection is right, when, you know, that Greyhound, you know, station was there, you know, if big bus, you know, come out and, you know, take a turn left on out of that facility and go on NJ Turnpike, it clogged the road. And it further, you know, clogged the, you know, traffic beyond, you know, 73. And that could be a potential problem. Now, you said that, you know, you're not going to use that during peak hours, so that's one of the solution, but, you know, how, that's not, you know, a certainty, right?
Yeah. Go ahead, Ruch. I think in our discussions, we, we, you've, you've informed me and we agree that there will be far less traffic than the buses pulling in and out of there. Because most of those buses come in and out during hours when folks need to get places, right? Early in the morning, they are going to New York City, they're going wherever they're going, same thing coming back at night. That wouldn't be the case here. You, you would have vehicle dealership, say, for example, and you can tell them, here's when you should come in and out of the site because traffic is difficult. And, you know, we all know that the site access up at Aloft with Starbucks, you know, the issues with the county and developing that. But we are, of course, going to have to deal with that same issue when we come back to develop the site for a long, for a long-term user. But we do have the ability to control that.
Yeah, and, and your point is a very good point, and that's one thing we really considered here when we were looking at who the potential user could be. And if you think about when the bus terminal was there, it was not only the buses, there's 696 parking spaces here, so you, there's a park and ride. So you had individuals coming, parking all peak hour traffic. This use, it should not be a peak hour use. They're not coming with flow of traffic. You know, they're probably delivering vehicles either in the middle of the day or later at night, and they're taking them out for delivery, you know, at some date in the future. So we were purposeful in trying to find a user that was not going to impact that because we knew that that is a concern. Is the lighting on the site still operational? Yeah, so we are, as we speak, actually having a physical inspection done of all the lighting and making LED improvements where we can and where we need to, but we, we're going to, we're going to have to make sure we address that for a tenant.
I have a question. That's why I used to use that bus back in 1971 when I was commuting to college. Cinnamons in New Jersey. But my question is, are there going to be brand-new cars that are going to be parked there?
Yes. So on that point, though, I used to take my sister, I grew up down the street, I used to take my sister there so she could go to New York all the time. This site is very near and dear to me, but yes, it's all brand-new manufactured vehicles.
But it will be new vehicles. What about security? I know you said it has a fence and this and that, but what about cars being stolen there, especially in the middle of the night?
So this is a fenced and gated with a lock on the gate. Now, if the tenant asks us to make an improvement on that, we're going, we're willing to consider it, you know, depending on the overall structure of the transaction. But if you think about how they're storing these vehicles now, it's not, they're not secure. I mean, they're in parking lots that are of office buildings, for example, where anyone can kind of walk in. So, you know, that is a risk that the user is going to have to assess and be willing to take on. But I believe that our site probably gives them a better option than what they have available to them.
Probably easier to steal a car from one of the hotels, right?
Could be.
Question.
In our, our report from our traffic engineer, she described the proposal as a fleet parking where employees will come in, drop off their personal cars, a couple of fleet cars a day.
We, we haven't, I haven't actually seen that traffic review, I'm sorry. I, I don't have it. But no, no, that, that, this will not be folks dropping their cars off and taking another car. This is for storage of a fleet of cars by the owner of those cars while the owners do, doing their business, whether it's selling them, whatever it is, and then bringing the car from this lot to the dealership to sell it to the consumer. So you won't even have folks picking up the cars here if they buy them at, at, at a dealership, for example. You won't even have folks saying, oh, your car's over here, you got to go get it.
I guess the question I would have, though, is if the cars are being delivered by truck, is that site already set up to allow the space required for the truck to be able to come in, unload somewhere, turn around, get back out?
Those trailers, from what we understand, are no bigger than what the Greyhound coach buses were. So we, we, our belief and what we've looked at with our, our engineer, would that be appropriate turn radius and access points are there based on what the buses were doing as well?
And then in terms of unloading, I think that would be up to tenant management. You know, the, the, the parking fields are clearly striped, but you can't fill the parking area and then expect to load and unload vehicles. So the tenant would, would, would manage that operation.
To be clear, I mean, 696 parking spaces right now, not including the, the portion where the buses were. The conversations we're having, it's like they're going to start with maybe less than a third of the site and potentially scale up to maybe max two-thirds of the site. Now, they want to take more, great, I guess, but that hasn't been part of the conversation just yet.
And it's not intended that that building be used to have like someone for security that works in there?
That has not come up in the conversations yet. Typically, they're not hiring visual, they're not paying for somebody to be on-site. A lot of these cars today, as you guys know, are taking shot. Yes. Alright. Anyone else?
So, you know, just to elaborate, you know, our chairman said that, you know, the curve, the turning radius should be sufficient, you know, to, you know, same like, you know, the, you know, Greyhound bus. It should not be a problem. So you have no plan to change the, you know, curve configuration?
We're doing no construction on the site, aside from if we have to make some improvements for the fence or lighting or something else, which has not come up just yet.
I guess you've seen the letter from New Jersey Turnpike Authority?
No.
They're requesting that the letter be read into the record of the hearing for purposes of documenting their concerns.
Yeah.
And they have a list there of 10...
I, I, I probably know what they are. Keep development away from the turnpike, make sure there's a fence between your property and the turnpike. Don't drain stormwater onto the turnpike. It's a, it's a form letter. But I didn't get it, which concerns me. Yeah.
Leave your copy to them.
Okay. It's in the mail, as they say.
Alright, well, essentially, the, the letter from the Turnpike Authority is dated December 3rd, 2024.
Right.
So they get plenty of notice for this hearing to be aware of their concerns.
Yeah.
But they list that the authority does not entertain requests for any form of noise mitigation, and I don't hear you making requests for them to make any noise mitigation for a car.
Right.
Proper, number two, proper consideration must be given to the developer's method of dust control. I don't think that Greyhound had any form of dust control in this amount of lot. Three, the authority is concerned with the discharge of site drainage directed towards the authority roadway. You're not changing any of the existing conditions.
Correct.
So whether you park a car there or not, water's going to go where it goes on that site, right?
Yep.
Alright, that's three.
Parking lot and the turnpike.
So they want adequate screening between your parking lot and the turnpike, which is that whole area of trees that already exists?
Yeah.
There's no change to their supply. Okay, the, if applicable, the applicant should provide lighting plans depicting the area size, source site. Well, we did talk a bit about lighting and just, one, making sure it's there so the facility is secure and, and safe, and as a deterrent for any one trying to steal anything there. So you already said you're going to maintain lighting for the facility. Which already is, it's already a fenced-in lot, you're not changing the fence. The applicant should be made aware of the fiber optic cable running along the authority's right-of-way line in this area. Somewhere in that area, there's a fiber optic cable.
In, in their right-of-way line, yeah.
Okay.
We're not doing any disturbance in the right-of-way.
Alright, the proposed location for this application may be affected by one-to-four capacity enhancement program.
Down the road, if they widen the turnpike or the, the, the Clover leaf there, they may condemn part of their property, that's what they're saying there.
They could do really to any applicant or any person that owns that. Next, encroachment on the authority's right-of-way is prohibited, so you're not planning to encroach the right-of-way?
Correct.
Ten, tree removal shall not be permitted within the authority's right-of-way, you're not proposing to remove any trees?
We are not.
So we've covered all the terms, conditions. Okay. Anything else?
You guys going to have some EV charging stations there?
No, there's no plan for us to install any EV right now. I mean, again, we don't, we want to make sure we're not affected by the site today by any, by the site that's involved here. So far, that has not come up in the conversation, so.
Whenever the ultimate use comes in here, whenever that is, there'll be requirement, your ordinance requires them, and we'll put them in.
Alright, so do you have any further testimony?
Got just some brief planning testimony, just to hit the items in, in the, in the R and V letter, if, if you don't mind.
Let's do that.
Thanks, Ruch.
So, Mr. Hawk, please state your name, your professional affiliation, qualifications for the record.
Stephen Hawk is my name, Hawk Planning LLC. I live at 509 Santa Clara in Cherry Hill. I've been practicing planning since 1988, been licensed for over 30 years in the state of New Jersey, also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners for over 30 years. 28 years experience with the city of Ireland, I was doing development review.
Interrupt the applicant and recommend the board accept him.
Thank you, counsel.
I was going to swear him in, too, but...
Swear in front of the testimony about to give be the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth?
I do, plus that testimony.
And everything you just said before was, too? Okay, we're going to accept you as an expert in planning.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawk, just referring to, take the mic with you, just referring to, to the aerial, let's stick to just that one. Just orient the board to the site to the extent, I, I'm sure everybody knows what's around this site, but just point out, you know, where in the world everything is there.
Okay.
And you're referring to A1?
A1 is the exhibit I'm looking at. This site is in basically the southwest area of Mount Laurel Township. And it is surrounded by many uses, many developed uses. Obviously, we talked about the turnpike being to the southeast. The hotel complex... Um, the hotel complexes, along with Miller's Air House, to the southwest. And then going um to the northwest uh is the um Social Security Administration and also the immigration buildings and various other office complexes. And then um to the to the east, which would be actually the northeast, is some more uh in industrial and office structures surrounding the site. This is an embedded site uh off of Fellowship Road, does not have street frontage, but has access, um, legal access to Fellowship.
So for the grant of use variance, for the positive criteria, we're required to prove one of three things: inherently beneficial, which we are not, um hardship, we're not going to ask the board to find there's a hardship here, but we may also satisfy the positive criteria by asserting that the property is ideally suited for this proposed use. Is that the case, based on what you've heard and what you've reviewed?
Definitely. As far as site suitability goes, you heard the ac applicant's testimony as far as how it meets the needs and the plans for what's gonna happen at the site. Uh, it has good access to highways. It is already paved, secured, lit. Uh, the lighting that will be needed to be enhanced will be done. Uh, there's other industrial uses in this area. No construction is needed. It's really a great adaptive reuse of this site, and um so therefore, this site is is particularly suited.
And then its location, it's it's close to the state highway system, um, got a mix of of compatible uses around it?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so in being ideally suited for this use, does the use satisfy the as some of the purposes of zoning in order to 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 prove the positive criteria?
I've identified a few purposes of zoning under forty colon fifty-five D dash two. Uh, the first one I identified is the general welfare, A. Uh, whenever you have a uh site that's not been used, that's been ignored and has um, you know, a an unused look to it, some of the shrubbery and and the vegetation has gotten out of hand, there's some graffiti, uh, been going on for probably over a year, up to a year and a half. Whenever a site's gonna be rejuvenated, that definitely satisfies the general welfare and promotes the general welfare by the the beautification of it. Just that reason by itself isn't the reason to grant variance, but it is one of the many that I've identified, uh, special reasons. And the fact that there's gonna be activity there, uh, there won't be a desolate look. It'll um actually help some of the other uses in that when people are using the other sites, they'll be able to look over and see an actively used site instead of something that's um been ignored and is vacant. So did you want me to go through a few other special reasons?
Absolutely.
Uh, purpose G, sufficient space and appropriate locations. That basically says that the municipality comes up with a plan for where to put residential uses, industrial, commercial, institutional uses. Your municipality has come up with the zoning scheme that allows for industrial uses in this area. Uh, quite a wide array of both industrial and some commercial uses. This certainly fits in. I'm gonna go into it a little bit towards the end of my testimony, how this is a use that actually is close to a couple of uses that you permit in this uh district. And um it's it's something that satisfies that that purpose, purpose G, by allowing sufficient space for a variety of uses. Reflow of traffic is another use to some degree, not not a real strong one, but it does to some degree. And it's the nature of how it's changed from uh the Greyhound bus scenario where a lot of traffic in the morning, probably a lot of traffic in the evening, uh, during the rush hours. Uh, now you're gonna have, I think, a more steady flow. Um, it doesn't mean that there isn't gonna be any uh traffic at all during peak times, but it'll be more steady throughout the day. Uh, you like, uh, the applicant said, there's probably gonna be a lot of midday um picking up of vehicles or dropping off of vehicles. So it it definitely helps out that perspective in clogging the streets at at some of the busier times. And it also eliminates some of the other smaller locations in the area and then uh creates a cohesive place for traffic to um to come to this site. Also, to a certain extent, purpose J, no further degradation of the environment. Uh, you're gonna have more efficient trips. These car companies that have storage lots throughout either Mount Laurel or other municipalities, they can have it in one place. They can um plan their trips. They can pick their vehicles appropriately and possibly reduce mileage uh and grab the vehicles all in one place, less miles traveled. And the other thing about the environment is that this is a piece of pavement, and you don't wanna see pavement go to waste because we all know how uh pavement creates um uh things that stormwater runoff and heat. And to create a whole nother paved area for a lot for cars would be um, you know, poor for the environment. To utilize this paved piece of property would be um beneficial for the environment. So uh one other thing is the more efficient use of the land under purpose M. Uh, it's well-positioned in this industrial zone, and it's a rare chance for this piece of property to be used. It's landlocked, doesn't have frontage. This is a use that doesn't need visibility. People that are gonna utilize it are gonna know about it. They're gonna know uh that that's where their cars are and that's where their um the rental arrangement is. So there is gonna be the efficiency of using this piece of land uh by this end use. That's all I have for the positives.
Thank you. So switching to the negative criteria, both both prongs, any substantial detriment to the to the public good?
Well, that's a test of how it may change the character or enhance the character or be out of character with what's there. And obviously, as you can see, there's a lot of buildings, a lot of asphalt, a lot of parking fields. Uh, and then this is a parking field that, you know, it's already there, number one. It's not like we're proposing it brand-new, but it's certainly not out of character. The benefit to the area would be the enhancement that we're gonna do as a result of the vegetation management and making the site look a little better. So definitely not any um detriment to the public good, very little, definitely not substantial.
Okay, and surrounding properties, they already have parking fields. We're not talking about residents back there where all of a sudden they're gonna see a hundred, a couple of hundred cars where previously they saw trees or something else.
That's correct. No residential uses here.
What about the second prong? Um, any impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance?
Correct, and um my conclusion is based on reviewing your master plan and then also reviewing your two thousand seventeen reexamination. There was a definite call-out in your reexamination report uh to, I'll read it. "To keep pace with modern standards, permissible uses for the industrial zone should include a distribution center and fulfillment center to address new types of specialized warehousing models. Further, these districts are more accessible for the transportation infrastructure that these uses require." So what the um reexamination report is talking about is that this location of this industrial zone in uh Mount Laurel is associated well with uh all the uh transportation routes in the area. Although we're not proposing a distribution center and a fulfillment center, we are proposing something that um relies on that um location to the the big transportation routes, and we'll have a lot less traffic than those and definitely a lot less truck uh truck traffic than what your master plan has as a goal. Um, another goal your master plan is the efficient movement of goods and people through the township. So um by having these um cars there, access to four lanes on Fellowship and then getting to the highways will efficiently uh move those vehicles through.
Okay, um, the township ordinance has section seventy-eight uh that requires the board to consider certain factors in um consideration of use variance uh request. Does this application um meet that that level of scrutiny?
Yes, it does. It allows for an orderly development of a property for, although it's not permitted, it's akin to a a couple of permitted uses, at least one that I've identified, and I'll talk about in a second. And when you authorize this, you'll wind up having a temporary use that's in line with uh that section of the ordinance.
If they authorize it, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, the one other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, and it's it's kind of peculiar to your industrial zone. Your industrial zone allows industrial uses, and it allows some commercial uses, allows restaurants and banks and various other things, so it's quite a mix. So it's not a heavy industrial zone. It's not a um, not even a medium industrial zone. It's a really light industrial zone. And there are certain things that your ordinance really goes to quite an extent to make sure do not happen. And that would be like dust, fumes, vapors, gases, smoke, light and heat, ground vibrations, and um any kind of um excessive sound. None of those will take place as a result of this use. So we definitely meet that's the spirit of of that section of uh your industrial zone.
No additional impact in terms of utility service, police service, um, no, no additional demand on on schools, no impact on the community.
None, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's what we have for you, an affirmative testimony. We're happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Sure. Um, so the cars that are being driven, will cars be driven in and out, or will they only be loaded up on a flatbed and taken in and out?
Rish. It's gonna be a combination.
It's gonna be a a combination.
Thank you. Combination of um driven in and out, I think, kind of depends on the demand of how they're selling these vehicles. I don't really know yet how they're gonna be kind of delivering them to the community. If they're selling them, you know, in batches, I guess, they may take a flatbed, take two cars at once, take three cars at once. Maybe on rare occasions, they're taking out one car at a time, but I gotta imagine it's efficient for that, but I, you know, I'm not the operator. I can't answer.
But in in terms of in of of delivery, it'll be mostly delivering cars in 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 increments of more than one, right?
Correct, yeah.
Are they being delivered individually or like to a dealer, and is the dealer in Mount Laurel?
So they, I think they're gonna be dispersed to multiple dealers, okay, so beyond just Mount Laurel, for example, um, without any cars. Uh, if it's, there's multiple users potentially in the mix. If it's one specific user, they're technically not allowed to have cars at their dealership, I believe, um, for a variety of reasons. And so they may go there to kind of take delivery of a vehicle versus kind of putting them out there on the showroom or department. Um, and they may deliver them direct to your home as well.
The the frontrunner, if you will, has a dealership in Mount Laurel, correct?
Just the only concern I would have, uh, I worked in dealers for about seven, eight years, um, is if you had like a new car being dropped off that's in a pre-prepped mode, and that is then in like a limp mode, and that's then being driven from this lot to a dealer on Route seventy-three um at fifteen, twenty miles an hour. That's not fully prepped to be driven. That's then causing the traffic.
Yeah, I I believe that is not gonna be the intent here because um if they if they are going to do that, I believe they're gonna locate them closer to their dealership. I I believe this is gonna be more of a multi-vehicle, take it to one destination, get them ready for delivery type of situation.
Any other questions? All right, uh, Brian, did you have any comments on this application?
Is that on? Is it, is it green?
Okay, can you hear me now? All right, great. Um, I just have a few comments and a a few conditions um I'd like to recommend to the board. Would be that uh all cars that are being brought to site are parked in parking stalls. Um, there's no cars parked in the drive aisles. And I'd like to keep existing, there's existing fire lanes on the site. I'd like to keep the maintain free of anything, any cars or any vehicles so there, so we have emergency vehicle circulation.
All right, so there are two things you said, and I see counsel is shaking his head as in agreeing.
Let's have Mr. Shuck shake his head, too.
So there was concerns about that if cars are parked there, they're parked in the marked stalls and that the drive aisles are maintained for adequate fire access?
Absolutely, that'd be a condition of any of this.
And that the existing fire lanes around the structure and the property would be maintained?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, with reference to the Remington and Vernick letter dated December fourth, um, just, I guess, a couple of questions that we have, which are in this letter. Is there any signage being um contemplated, any kind of signage at all?
Not at the moment.
Um. You talked about lighting. There is existing lighting on the property.
Correct, we're in the process of evaluating.
That'll be upgraded to make sure that this property's lit.
Are there any limitations that that would be required if lighting is updated? Like, I know in some places, they had to make sure they had the ones that only shine down and not up, like, is that part of whatever current approval they have or something that should be conditioned in their review of this?
I'd I'd have to check the details of the requirements, but I think typically what is being requested or required is no lighting should carry over onto the adjacent properties. So there must be shielding to prevent lighting onto adjacent properties. That's one of the things that typically is required.
All right, you can continue.
Um, I appreciate the applicant having discussed in detail the the nature and the operations of the proposal. And I think the planning, the the applicant's planner has covered the requirements with respect to the MLUL in connection with the D one use variance that's being proposed. And I don't have any planning concerns with that testimony. So that's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Questions from board members? Anyone from the public wish to speak about this application? None, I will close the public portion, uh, bring it back. Uh, would someone like to make a motion regarding this application? Well, I think that there were a lot of conditions that they agreed to, so they'd be wrapped in motion. Want to clarify them first? We can do that. Good. All right, so we're clear that there's no requested signage. I don't think our traffic engineer gave us anything to indicate that there would be a problem that would require us to say limit certain times.
Janie, I'm not gonna be able to hear you on the, I'm sorry. Okay.
So I think that we had the the conditions requested by fire department, that any parking is within stalls, not blocking drive aisles, not uh interrupting any of the dedicated fire zones already in existence. I think that what Mr. Danifelter was raising, I don't know that they could legally drive any of those cars in in that condition on Route seventy-three.
And the applicant testified that it wasn't good or anything. The applicant's testified that's not good.
Well, he said he didn't think it would. We don't have an actual penny yet.
Is there a way to properly describe that condition to ensure that it's not going? Because I I I would have a problem if a car tries to come out there, go down Fellowship Road or Route seventy-three at some limited capacity.
So I had a thought, Mr. Chairman, is that it sounds like the use that's described is not open to the general public.
Right, that's correct.
Right, and so that to the extent vehicles may be coming in and out, they would be from employees or agents of another local car dealership. Seems to me that if it was open to the public, the concern about cars coming in and out, it would be less control or it'd be less control over the vehicles coming in and out. So if if we would state as a condition that it would not be open to the public, I think that solves a lot of it.
Yeah, in in this particular case, though, what he was saying was he worked for a dealership, and and sometimes cars come off uh car carriers with a lot of stuff and packaging, so they have to be driven really slow until they can be prepped for actually road traffic. So what his concern was that cars would come off car carriers, correct me if I'm wrong, would go there, and then somebody would individually get one and go drive it over to Ford on Route seventy-three and go at twenty miles per hour.
Yeah.
That that's what you were concerned about.
Well, and it's it's also that it's like, so it's in a in a mode, because they, cars have like, you know, different security systems and all types of computers. It won't even go over fifteen and twenty miles an hour, right? So that would be my only concern, is that those are then trying to drive on a very congested, busy.
And I I think that would be a reasonable condition, but I I just.
Yeah, if I could just make a comment on that. I mean, these vehicles are being parked in the town in various spots. From what I understand, that's not what's happening. These are not in limp mode, uh, cars. I personally, again, I'm not the the user here. I can't tell you with certainty that they're a hundred percent.
So let's just make a condition. They can't be used on on public roads in limp mode from that location.
Is that what it's actually called, limp mode? Uh, I don't know. I would say it's gotta be like a fully.
Some kind of restricted capacity.
I would say, yeah, it's gotta be like a.
I would say, yeah, it's gotta be like a fully prepared, like new or used vehicle.
Can I ask you a question, though? Is there a law that regulates the slowest minimum speed that a car can drive on fellowship road or seventy-three?
There are actually are minimum speed limits and maximum speed limits on all the roads, but nobody tends to go the minimum, so they're only they close the maximum.
If it's already regulated by law, why can't?
Our our concern is if we're inviting in a use that could cause, okay, there's gonna be a fleet of twenty mile an hour vehicles trying to go down Route seventy-three at nine o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, yeah.
We we don't wanna invite something that's going to cause a detriment to traffic in the area um as a whole. So I think the premise of you're gonna store cars, they're gonna come in, they're gonna come out, they're able to operate. I don't think there's a genuine concern about that. It's just we don't want to invite these situations where, oh, they're gonna try to jog a car from here to Holman or Lexus, wh- whatever it's going to be, um, and cause some sort of problem or concern for everyone else that's using the area.
I I look, I totally understand. I mean, do we say maybe that a user can't take a car off of this property below, you know, certain speed limit? I
I wouldn't say that, I think.
I think it's just the the the, you know, essentially it should be fully functional, yeah. That that's the only thing I can.
You know, if they're being driven individually.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't care if they're on car carriers.
Yeah, I I don't care if it can go, you know, seventeen miles an hour if we said it could go fifteen. Like, I think it's just, you know, store the cars in and out to whatever dealerships. So I think, is there a way to characterize that, Ed, if that's what the the board desires?
Yes, like, if the board desires, we could we could include a condition requiring the operation of the fleet parking facility to um wire vehicles leaving the site unless they're on a truck or on a trailer that they be operational so as to not create a hazard.
Believe it's, and that that, I think that that covers it. Okay. So we have that. Any other concerns, conditions? Okay, then are you making that motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion um that we approve the use subject to the conditions we just went over.
There are second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Franciscone, roll call please.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Uh, I approve.
Mr. Franciscone?
I approve.
Mr. Desai?
I approve.
Mr. Sharp?
I approve.
Kramer?
I agree.
Mr. Danifelder?
I approve.
Chairman Gray?
I agree. And just confirming this was just the one-year conditional.
Yes.
Yeah.
Approved, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes left. Two minutes? What? Alan, you good or can we go through? Oh, we're going through. Secretary, please read the next application.
Higher Leaf, zoning board number twenty-four D seventeen, at eight thirteen East Gate Drive, twelve oh one point oh four, lot one point oh two, in the industrial zone. The applicant seeking
Oh, we didn't have the attorney, if he needed two minutes.
Keep going.
You're good.
Six-month extension of approval time for Higher Leaf LLC and approved condition, an approved conditional use variance to allow a retail.
And just, so we have it for the record, what was the prior approval?
It's for the conditional use for retail.
Yeah, do we have the the docket of what that was?
The date, you mean?
I I offhand, I don't.
Okay, that's fine. Counsel, your parents?
And if you give me a second, I actually can pull up the number if that's helpful.
That may be helpful, yes.
You know what, I cannot find it currently, but I'll get started.
We can ref- we can refer to it. I know, I know that we previously dealt with this application and issued an approval. I'm not sure what the, I guess the date was November first, twenty twenty-three, was that the?
And I think it was D seventeen. Does that sound similar to how you number it?
Yes.
It might have been twenty-three D seventeen.
That was it.
Twenty-three D seventeen.
That would, that, there you go, so.
Which is confusing because this is twenty-four D seventeen.
Just break it out.
Okay. All right, your parents, please?
Good evening, Amanda Curley from Dave Pitney on behalf of the applicant Higher Leaf. Here tonight, requesting the extension of the prior approval. As noted, we were here last year uh for minor site plan approval and a D-three variance to operate a Class Five retail cannabis dispensary on property located at eight thirteen East Gate Drive, um, lot one point oh two in block twelve oh one point oh four, it's located in the industrial zone. A D-three variance was required because the existing building that we're performing the interior fit out on.
I can spare the phone, switch to the other one, you can.
Yeah, um.
The building that we were doing the it, the outfit on, was just shy of the rear, the set back apartment. I think it was by less than two feet. It was a very minor request there. And then we had a couple of bulk variances as to minimum parking, um, lack of loading spaces and loading space size. The um, the owner is right now currently seeking permits. They've applied, they were rejected, so they're going back to resubmit those permits. Unfortunately, it's been a little bit hectic trying to get our architect to sign and seal the plans. What we had submitted, the demo plans, weren't signed and sealed. So that was the reason that the construction department, building department rejected them. Uh, we fully expect to pull our permits prior to the May first date, which we're requesting for our extension to go to. And we are working on um obtaining all permits to start work. We have engaged a general contract.
Ms. Curley, when you were here last year, you also had site plan.
It was minor site plan approval, a minor site plan approval and a D-three variance. So typically under the municipal land use law, you get a protection of two years for minor site plan approval. Your ordinance has a provision that if you don't start construction within a year, you have to come back and request an extension.
That's what I was gonna say is that uh our ordinance has a has a provision which is, I wanna call unique, other municipalities may have it, requires an applicant to return uh if the board has granted zoning relief. The MLUL provides a two-year window or protection for site plan approval. And the language of that statute would appear to cover any other land use relief granted as far as that site plan. So I I don't have an objection from a legal standpoint to the application, they're complying with our ordinance, and I think it's also justified or.
Okay, my my only question was going to be, you said you were asking for approval until May?
Six months.
Six months, but we can approve it up to a year?
No, not an extension.
Not the extension has to be only six months?
Yes.
That's the maximum we can do? Okay.
If they have to come back, there'll be a different discussion because because of the MLUL.
Yes, but uh we do fully intend to pull permits within the next six months. We're just kind kind of working with our professionals to make sure the demo permits are satisfactory to the building department and leave all the other conditions of the resolution have been satisfied. So it's really just working through the permit process. I leave the permits that we're initially seeking are cleanout permits.
Okay. Anyone from the board have any questions?
Nope.
Anyone from the public wish to speak about this application? All right, we're gonna close the public portion. Um, I I'll make a motion to approve the six-month extension based on the same terms and conditions as the board previously approved.
Second.
Roll call? Yes.
I approve.
Mr. Desai?
I approve.
Mr. Sharp?
I approve.
Mr. Kramer?
I agree.
Mr. Danifelder?
I approve.
Vice Chair Anderson?
I approve.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What did we do?
What?
I did.
Mm-hmm, in the very beginning, you did.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion items. Uh, the secretary did submit the calendar of meeting dates for next year. We're not approving them yet, that's for reorg. There also circulated the official newspaper and setting of these. Well, we don't, okay, that's a different thing. Uh, draft rules and regulations and uh the start of the variance um report to the township council. I think we're also gonna have some ordinance recommendations um uh January in light of some uh temporary things that came up again. Uh, so if anyone has any issues with the dates or those things, uh circulated to the secretary before the reorg meeting. And the reorg meeting is January fifteenth here. Um, the other thing we have is a resolution thanking uh Mr. Bunkaria for his service as a board member from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. Hopefully the members have been able to sign off on that. Anyone else have anything else for tonight? Uh, thank you for pinch hitting. I I know it's a tough spot to kinda pop into.
I mean, on applicants, you have no
Glad to do it, thank you.
The first two applicants just thought you were Ashton, so.
I can be a
It's the similarity.
Yeah, that's it.
Nice to see you, we haven't seen you for a couple of months, Brian. Uh, all right, motion to close?
I move.
Second? Anybody?
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're done. Thank you.
Happy holiday.
All right, that's done. That's